Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm too happy to house here. On the wall from everybody that's keeping the Holland County County Attorney Room, Board of Duty Number 75. It is Thursday, 10:10 a.m. Sorry for the late start. With that being said, we will go into public comments. And you will have three minutes, your name and address.
My name is Robert Santos. I live in Austintown, Ohio. I'm also a trustee for Austintown. I come today feeling frustrated and disappointed in the evident lack of ordination and collaboration and respect that has transpired. On Tuesday morning, while attending a Board of Education, or excuse me, Board of Elections meeting, a member approached me and informed me of a building in Austintown they are going to tour and inviting me to come along. I'm very excited. Upon my arrival, I was warmly welcomed with smiles, handshakes, and even hugs by both the Board of Elections and the Port Authority. However, the situation shifted when Commissioner David Ditzler arrived. Without hesitation, he questioned my presence, stating, "Robert, why are you here? This does not pertain to you." I explained how I was invited as a current elected official up Austintown, how a building in Austintown is being viewed by another government agency. He then repeated and reiterated, "This does not pertain to you. There is no reason for you to be here." I made it clear I was indeed invited. As a trustee, I'm actively involved, especially when we have potential tenant or developer interested in a location that has remained vacant since prior to the pandemic. It is our duty as elected officials to collaborate with other individuals to ensure there is a smooth transition and process when other developers or tenants come in. Commissioner Ditzler continued to express his frustration with the previous projects on how information got out and product did not go through. I then explained how I am an elected official, I am a trustee, and that would never do anything to hinder any growth, not just in Austintown, but the county as a whole. When asked if he was instructing me to leave, he reiterated there was no reason for me to stay. I agreed to leave, not wanting to create an issue, prevent any type of growth in the county, especially Austintown. At that moment, Mr. McCabe from the Board of Elections intervened, clarifying the Port Authority owned the building and now is invited by the Board of Elections and that he, I will be staying. It is disheartening to witness a refusal to include us due to political affiliations. And that's exactly what it is. Since my election, I have maintained a respectful approach. I advocated strongly for the Stormwater Project in my first year, which I thank each and every single one of you personally when I come down here to this meeting for that effort, regardless of political affiliations. However, it is a political affiliation. During the Taste of Austintown, Mr. Ditzler had one of his officials put a sticker on my back for 45 minutes I walked around without knowing. I gave his wife, who did a great job being a founder of the Taste for the Taste of Austintown and the Junior Women's League. Yet, he only mentioned the other two trustees and even cropped me out of photos. It appears the focus has shifted towards self-serving interests rather than prioritizing the community's needs and sharing collaboration. I firmly believe the Austintown Township and the residents of the county in its entirety deserve an apology for being excluded from these type of efforts that directly impact them. Elected officials to be involved in decisions that affect the sinewits. The sentiment was echoed in recent election when voters expressed a fatigue with bureaucratic influences. I look forward to the new coming board and actual proper collaboration and coordination with all individuals who are in need. Thank you.
So I, I definitely not going to let those lies and misnomers go forward without a response to that. So I was asked by Carol, because she could not attend, because her husband was in the hospital, to just show up as part of the board with David Beatrice only to walk through the Board of, the, walk through the infrastructure building. So unbeknownst to any meeting in the morning, anything that transpired at a board meeting for the Board of Elections, David had made an announcement. I knew none of that. When I showed up there at 10:00 to 12:00, thinking that David was going to be the only one along with Randy Partika and the Port Authority to walk through the building. There's TV cameras, there's Robert Santos, there's the administrator for Austintown. And I looked around and I said, "What is this?" You know, I thought we were just walking through the building so I could show David Beatrice because Carol couldn't make it. And so when I questioned all of the people being there and, and all of the reasoning for them to be there, I saw Robert and I said, "Why are you here? You don't have any reason to be here." And that's exactly what I said to him.
Ten years, wait five minutes.
You had your time. You had your time. You're done. And I questioned why he was there. And he said, "I'm an Austintown trustee." I said, "This doesn't have anything to do with Austintown Township and Trustees." And he said, "Oh, well, I'm a trustee. I should be able to be here." And I said, "Well, this was the Port Authority's meeting, so not until, uh, David said, or David or I forget. I mean, because there was a lot. Sandy Berger was there. There are the, from the Board, Joyce Calpesta, Tom McCabe, everyone was there." And, and I was taken back. And then they explained that they announced it at the meeting. And I'm the one who said, "Stay, Robert. Just stay. You're fine to stay." It wasn't Tom McCabe, it was me. I said, "Stay." Tom McCabe never said anything about that. I said, "That's fine. If they made an announcement at the meeting, unbeknownst to me, let it happen." And if, and if you want to act like a 14-year-old high school girl and talk about your colleague on the Board of Education in Austintown, Harold Porter, screwing with you and a sticker had nothing to do with me at that meeting. And my wife created the Junior League and one person acknowledged it, and I thanked them, and I never cropped you out of a single picture, and I challenge you to prove it and show it to me. So you want to get petty of all this bullshit, then, then you can go ahead. But you know what? We're here for business purposes. If you want to make it personal, I'll see you later.
I don't want any fighting. I understand. First ten was here. Let's move on. Let's move on. Keep, keep it the course of the meeting. Next.
Mr. Board, I'd ask your indulgence. Uh, this is such an important issue. I'd ask that I be given more than three minutes, if that's permissible, because I think it's such an important issue.
Okay, if you'd like, I'll give you five.
Thank you very much. To the Board of County Commissioners, to the Commissioner-elect, I see the mayor is in the audience, and to the trustee, I just want to augment my comments. I was told by Carol that there was a building that was available. And I said, "The only way I would look at a building is if I took a Republican board member with me, because the Board of Elections is not mine. The Board of Elections belongs to the people." And so I asked Joyce to come and Tom and Melissa and anyone else so we could look to see. Before I begin, I want to make some quotes to you. No one has this job. This job isn't Tito Brown's job. And the trustee's job isn't Mr. Santos's job. The public entrusts you to do the job. It's the public's job. Sometimes we forget that as public officials. I have one foot in a private sector and one foot in a public sector. And so, um, I hear government should run more like a business and government should do this. Well, I know this much. That building is not working. The famous American priest Theodore Hesberg said, "Voting is a civic sacrament." The President, uh, former President of the United States, one of the founding fathers of the United States, said, "We do not have a government by the majority. We have a government by the majority who participates." Abraham Lincoln said, "The ballot is stronger than the bullet." And elections, they don't belong to us. They belong to the people. "And the future of the republic," Dwight D. Eisenhower said, "is in the hands of the American voter." But the most amazing quote I found was from American author Sharon Salzberg. "Voting is the expression of a commitment to ourselves, to one another, to this county, to this country, and to this world." And when I think of voting, Anthony, because I read your quotes in the paper this morning, I think of my son. You watched him grow up? He's deployed right now in parts unknown. He and hundreds of other soldiers are protecting this country so we can protect and ensure that what we have been placed in our hands is the most sacred thing we have to the people of Mahoney County. And that's their right to vote. That's sacred. There's nothing more important than people participating in our democracy. And when I see we only had 70% turnout, I am disheartened. We should have 100% turnout. People should participate because there's people's lives who are on the line, who are sacrificing their very existence to protect your right to vote. I've had people lobby me. People call me. Let me just say something about Oak Hill. Whether Oak Hill was good or Oak Hill was bad, or whether you have skin in Oak Hill or you don't have skin in Oak Hill, Oak Hill has nothing to do with what I'm about to present. We moved from the uptown in August of 2011. And the Commissioners were told at that time, "This really isn't going to work that well." And from 2011 until 2024, I want any, all of you to think about how the political landscape has changed. How our early voting has gone up almost to 70% from the time we moved there. So there's four basic issues I want to talk to you about. Security, operational issues, insufficient parking for voters, insufficient area for curbside voting. I don't know if the public knows this. We are in four different places in that. Our voting machines that this, that the voters, the taxpayers, have invested $2.4 million on are on pallets covered by tarps because of leaking pipes. That we're not, we, we don't even have them secured like we should. Our other stuff is on the fifth floor, not secured like it should be. These are people's votes. There's nothing more sacred than a person's vote or your right to a jury trial. These are things that are sacred to our country, sacred to our democracy. I, I was embarrassed having the Secretary of State walk through because to walk to the Board of Elections, you've got to walk to three other departments even to get to the Board of Elections. The early vote area is not a designated space, but shared with others in the public. It is not, it is not secure.
Fifteen seconds, David.
I just want to say this. That building, Anthony, it's not good for us. It's not good for the voters. The place we looked at is centrally located. It is, has a bus route, and it's something we could do. And with all due respect to the Commissioner-elect, he and I have talked about the Board of Elections building and how inadequate it is. And the time to act is now. We don't need a, we don't need a study. We don't need a commission. We've been saying for years, that building is not sufficient. And the time to do it is now. These are people's votes we're playing with. I want the public to know that their machines are secured, their voting is secured, and that we take that seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Next.
Good morning. I'm Gino DiFabio, Commissioner-elect, Mahoney County. I live in Youngstown, 970 East Philadelphia Avenue. I saw this on the agenda and I toured the building. I would ask that the board give me six weeks because whatever decision they make, and there's another board, there's a new board starting in January, we'll have to be responsible for. Oak Hill is, is a patient, but it's not on life support. We're not saving lives today in this room by, by saying yes to buy this building. I would like the opportunity to evaluate all the buildings that we have and to talk to the people and to find out who's going in there. Because about a month ago, I mentioned, or not myself, but a participant in one of their forums said about Oak, about the Board of Elections. And at that time, Commissioner Ditzler went in a church and says, "Well, I've never heard anything about the Board of Elections wanting to move."
David Beatrice has never approached me.
I want my time back.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Jim.
Again, he stood up there and he says, "Well, I don't know anything about the Board of Elections wanting to move. We're going to tear down the parking deck and build something on the property to try to keep it in the city." Well, within the last week, everything's changed five times. I just want to be able to, and I, I don't think that six weeks would make that much of a difference. Give me six weeks. I've already, I've already taken time off of work to, to look at other things in a county. I'd like to be part of the decision to buy the building that I'm going to be responsible for for at least the next four years. I don't see it, I don't see it as, as a major rush to get it. And I, I don't know how the Port Authority feels, but if the decision doesn't have to be made, if it could be made in five weeks from now or six weeks, if that would be okay. Because I promised the people in the valley, the residents of Mahoney County, that I'd be very judicious with their money. I'm not a hypocrite and I'm not a liar. And I'm not going to let anybody talk to me and, and think, you know, have that impression of me. And I'm going to say, I'm going to do what I said I was going to do. And I want, I want the time to do the due diligence for my own, for my own before I would vote. And I think I deserve a right to vote on this. It's a very substantial amount of, of funds, of the taxpayer dollars, the residents' dollars. And I think I deserve to, uh, to have that. They, you know, I did win the election and I think I deserve that. Other than, you know, we know the board's changing. And that's what I want to do. And that's what I would appreciate if you would put this aside until I take office or just after. Thank you.
Next. I go. Anyone on the screen? Okay. African said, uh, motion, Carol?
A motion for the approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number 44, Thursday, November 14, 2024, approval bills for any.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanti?
Yes. Motion to approve General Entry Number One.
Motion for the approval of General Entry Number One.
Second. Roll calls.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda? Commissioner Chafficanti?
Yes. Agreements A and B. And, uh, page.
Excuse me for, this is my goalie interrupting for a moment. Um, can you put the auto view on so that we can see the speakers before this part? I don't have control over that.
Would you what, Mike?
Put the auto view on so that the speakers can come on. Thank you, Alan.
Yep.
This one?
Yeah.
Is that better, Mike?
The place is gone now.
Could be able to see the speakers in the corner hearing room there as well.
I'm looking at some paint, Sager, whoever that is.
That's his.
Different views.
Is that better, Mike?
Yeah, I got a picture. It's pretty, if you want to use it, that's fine. Put it up. Go ahead.
We won't know until someone's speaking.
That's okay.
Okay. Can we continue without that?
Hasmat.
Are we in violation? Sure. Well, there's no one on the screen. I don't know if they can hear us or they can't.
And I could do hasmat, right?
Or I could do.
Okay, Jimmy, you're in. I don't.
All right. I said I would. Agreement, Letter A, hasmat. It's agreement with Snyder LLC for engine repairs and maintenance of various vehicles in an amount of $1,673. And this is a non-general fund expenditure.
Thank you, sir. And Sheriff, the directors.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Letter B is an agreement with, uh, Kaleigh Murray to conduct the pre-audit in the county jail in the amount of $8,000, which is non-general.
Thank you, sir.
Motion for the approval of Number Two, Agreements A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanti?
Yes. Change orders A through D will begin over all leg. So Phil.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want you to know I logged on at 9:23, so I wouldn't be tardy today. Uh, I have four change orders. Change order number one with W and W Construction, uh, for lead housing control and healthy homes work at 210 Portland, uh, South Portland in the amount of, uh, $1,550. Change order number one with American Pinnacle Construction, uh, for lead housing control and healthy homes work at 1624 East High in the amount of $1,580. Uh, Letter C is change order number one with the Howland Company for lead housing control and healthy homes work at 142 Belmont in the, uh, amount of $475. And change order number one with Howland Company again at 144 Belmont, uh, which is actually, uh, apartment number two for $845. All four non-general.
Thank you.
Number Three. Motion for the approval of Number Three, Change Orders A through D.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Agueda? Commissioner Chafficanti?
Yes. Motion for Resolutions.
Motion for the approval of Resolutions Number One, Edition.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanti?
Yes. Moving on. Record of bids. Senator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is for the transportation of disposal of domestic wastewater sludge from the Mahoney County Metropolitan Sewer District operated, uh, wastewater treatment plants and 20 cubic yard roll-off containers provided by the bidder.
Thanks.
Motion for the approval of Number Two, Record of Bids A.
Second. Roll call. Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficanti?
Yes. Resolutions, Letters A through I will begin with, uh, Commissioners, I'll take that. Resolution regarding fixing time, place, a view, final hearing, and notice thereof proposed efficient to vacate part of Glen Park Road in Gordman Township. Letter B. O and B. Jen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, Item B is a resolution to cash advance funds to the prosecutor's dreecap on the real estate, uh, reimbursement. The real estate reimbursements are coming in about 12 to 16 months behind. So we're going to put the cash in there so they can pay. Um, C is a resolution approving an MOU for the road and bridge tax with Beaver Township for $268,810. Um, and D is a resolution to transfer funds from the general fund to the capital project fund in the amount of $2,575,000 for the property, acquisition of property.
Any comments on that from the Port Authority?
Thank you, Commissioners. Chair. Um, we're here to comment on a building that we did acquire as the Port Authority. As a reminder, the Western Reserve Port Authority serves two political jurisdictions. We serve Mahoney, the Board of Mahoney County Commissioners as well as the Board of Trouble County Commissioners. Our Board is a reminder to the body that it's represented by official, individuals from the community, of the business community and, and the like, that represent four from Mahoney and four from Trouble County. Um, so oftentimes, we will participate in construction and development projects at the pleasure of the Board either Commissioners. Uh, in this particular case, we saw a building, the community, the Port Authority saw a building that sat vacant since pre-pandemic, as it was mentioned. Um, and we're of course interested in putting any building back into productive use. That's our purpose. Uh, so we want to see something happen productively with 5740 Patriot Boulevard. Um, the building is about 50,000, 49,570 square feet. There are 552 parking spaces ample for any service that the Port of, or that the County Commissioners would want to with their development or any private sector developer. There's eight entrances, so it's ideal for multi, uh, it could be multi-tenants of any fashion. It could be, uh, different agencies. It could be in the private sector, different types of businesses. So there's a lot of versatility to the building. Another part of the building is it's free span almost throughout. Um, it's a, the structure has, I guess, in a sense like a grocery store. There's not a lot of demolition that would have to take place, very wide open spaces in various areas. So it's a really solid building for that use to be put back into productive use. I'm going to have Randy Partika, uh, he's the engineer, a structural engineer on our staff. Been doing this for about 38 years to talk about the types of things should the Commission, uh, choose to go forward. Again, he served at the pleasure of the Commission. We'll, we'll do whatever the Commission requires of us. But we want to let you know specifically the condition of this building.
Uh, real quick, I worked with BS, BSHM Architecture and Phoenix Mechanical Engineers to put an assessment together. Uh, basically, we're looking at to get it all right and moving condition. Perfect, perfect for the new tenant or whoever goes in. We're looking at about four and a half million dollars. Keep in mind, 1.2 million dollars of that is for the parking lot. 1.6 million is for a new roof. Half the roof is 27 years old, the other half is 17. The 27-year-old roof has had repairs in the past. The roof is secure now, so it's secure now. So technically, the roof doesn't need to be replaced this before winter or anything like that. It's in fair shape. But 27 years old for half of the roof is, uh, near its lifespan. And of course, the other one is only 17 years old, but that probably will be replaced in the next five years or five to 10 years or so. So the rest of it, we got a million dollars worth of finishings. You're gonna, hasn't been used. Hasn't been air circulation in it for over a year. You got carpeting, you got ceiling tiles, you got, uh, wall coverings. All that would need to be replaced. We got about $400,000 anticipated for LED lighting upgrades. And we're going to have to maybe about $200,000, $300,000 for, uh, some mechanicals. Uh, the, uh, air units on the roof are double the capacity because it used to be a call center. So we, we've got some downsizing to do and some ventilation to rework and so forth like that. So minus the parking lot and the roof, the actual move-in, uh, is about $2 million on the structure. And the structure itself is brick and it's in excellent shape.
About how much would it cost to replace this building?
You're looking at $3, $350 a square foot. So you're looking at about 14 to 16 million dollars to build a new building of this size.
It's time we'll enter team. Any questions through the chair, uh, you might have about the condition of the building.
Well, I love the building. I try to buy it all the time because I think we need to move ahead of the game. We need to get out of the old place and move ahead of the game and look for things that fit Mahoney County and are ready. And I want some new one now, but.
And, and just to, uh, to bring to the attention that $25,000 was put down in earnest money. And the payment has to be made before the end of the week. We lose the opportunity to purchase the building. There are backup buyers that will pay the same price for the building. So if we don't act, we don't, we no longer have an option to act. Plus, we lose our earnest money. So we've been assessing buildings for two years. We've been kicking the can down the road. We've moved forward on the Veterans Services Building. And same situation. We've acquired a building adjacent to the Veterans Hospital. We were going to have about $7 million into a building half the size. So we're moving forward on that. We're not putting it on hold because of what ifs. You know, we're tasked to serve people, the residents of Mahoney County during the time we're in office. And the last I looked, my responsibility doesn't end until January 2nd. So for two years, we have been looking at building assessments. That's why we brought Alan in here. He's been looking at buildings since we started to either renovate, replace, move forward. Yes. We've looked at buildings. We want a building in City of Youngstown. We came this close to buying the IBM building. We should have bought the IBM building. It was my intent. We, I, I wanted to purchase that building. I won't get into that, that's, but that's downtown. We could have moved the offices there that needed to go there. JFS, Children's Services, you know, child support, children's services. Could have all moved the major tenants into the IBM building. Now, now it's used for storage by Door Park stuff. So this building, we have an opportunity on just like we have, we had when we bought the building for the veterans. You know, the opportunities come and go. We are tasked as a board to make a determination at this meeting. That's why it's on the agenda of what we're going to do or whether we're just going to remain the status quo. Because if we don't move on this building, then we go back to square one and we start the two-year process or whatever it takes to reassess other buildings and look for other options. to reassess other buildings and look for other options and opportunities because this option is not on the table after today. So that's, am I correct or am I wrong?
We have a backup offer. We have a backup offer on the building, there's interested parties.
And, and I'd like to say a few.
And again, we'll, we serve at the pleasure of the Commission, so.
Oh, I know. You know, I was the one that was involved in the purchase of Oak Hill. We said at the time, we had a disaster happening on Garland Avenue. And I don't wanna be a revisionist, but I went through a lot of hell in order to acquire that facility to move our largest tenant, which was Jobs Family Services that pays for the majority ticket for the Oak Hill Renaissance Center, and we, we got the new office space there. We also moved a bunch of other, uh, agencies in there which included veteran services. That was located in an old building, basically, we were paying, ran on, uh, a building that we were responsible for everything as we worked for Garland. So we moved those agencies into the Oak Hill Renaissance, can I finish? We moved those agencies into the Oak Hill Renaissance Center, Oak Hill Renaissance Center met all those needs. The building is half full. We have all of that space. And Dave's right, we have looked at other buildings, other possibilities. I don't wanna see any really county agencies leaving the City of Youngstown, that's why when I was Commissioner today, we relocated to the Renaissance Center that was offered to us. And there's people calling me on the phone like Dave Beecher Scott, people loving me, oh, move it out to the Sam's Club building in Boardman. That's available. Take J F S out of the city. Well, I wasn't going to do that. Ladies and gentlemen, as Mr. Beecher said about the Constitution, I'm elected as your Commissioner and I won the election. But I have to look at every single avenue, every single dollar, every single purchase agreement that goes to the county. Yes, I would like to have a brand-new county building, don't own the Oak Hill property, we already own it, it's our land. We don't have to come up with anything, we can tear down the parking deck, we have options. The Board of Elections, I had a conversation with, um, the Director back there the other night. He said he'd like to look at other options, particularly maybe a building with a loading dock. So all of this being said, and I, and honestly, there's no, nothing wrong here, but I feel I'm being pressured because there's a deadline that we have to meet in order to go ahead and vote to spend taxpayers' money on a building that I have to see the final results, how much it's gonna cost. We have to go out to bids. We need to do more due diligence. I personally would feel more comfortable if we could in fact hold off to do this, but I, this is right, there is a deadline. That building's available. I think there's way more due diligence that needs to be done for, I would feel comfortable, we have a new administration coming in. And, uh, the new Commissioner, he's gonna have a lot of questions. And honestly, it's gonna be me, Gino and Carol that's gonna have to make this building work. And I was told, and Anthony, you and I had that conversation, I asked him three tenants that I was told that were gonna take the Patriot Building was planning, building and letting. And you told me that only fills up about twenty percent occupancy of that building. I said, oh, well, how's that gonna work? Oak Hill's half full, we own Oak Hill. What are we going to do there? And then I saw on the news that the Board of Elections showed interest. I would like to have enough time to sit down and talk to the Board and Mr. Fortunato, who's our purchasing director, because I, I'd like to see the purchase agreement. I don't know what's in it, what the fees are, but I just think before we do this, I would like to have that opportunity to sit and talk to everybody. Maybe the Patriot Building isn't the right building for the Board of Elections, maybe it is. And if it is, I'm gonna work with the two Commissioners to make the building work. I just have disagreements and I don't feel comfortable in writing on building. Go ahead, Carol.
Well, I think it should be my time. This isn't a new process. This has been looked at for two years, it's been vacant. We've been saying this, you have been in the meetings and you have agreed that this is a great place, yes. You have agreed to that for two years. Now, we're not moving J F S out of Oak Hill. Beecher showed interest on TV, he got, I got a call from him, I said, sure, go look at it. He brought his board members, I couldn't go, Dave had to go, it's France in the hospital. All right, this building is mint. We will never build a building like this for fourteen million dollars, no. Oak Hill is I don't like Oak Hill, I never did, I didn't buy it and I would not have. All right, I don't like the way it's set up, I don't like the parking deck because I have my own issues with that. It's, it may have worked then, it's not working now. We need to move ahead of this. Whatever we have to do, we need to move ahead. And I know I'm gonna be in here with Mr. De Fabio and Mr. Chafficanti, and I understand that. I do understand that, but I've never, since I started in City Council and I was with Tino Brown, have backed down from anything, have I? Never. And I've never backed down here as I ran in a contentious race in eleven for this position. And I made up my mind, when I come here, I'm gonna do it right for Mahoney County, that's it. I'm sick of this political bullshit. I'm really sick of it. Because that doesn't affect me and you and Gino or me, you and David, it affects two hundred and sixty-five thousand people. And I'm not playing that game anymore. So I'm, I love this building and I'm voting for it. I never backed down from what I feel is right. And you didn't either in those meetings. So I don't know what changed between there and now, I mean, you act like we're moving Eric Allen, please, please.
Carol, when, when we first looked at the, at the progress.
All right, we're not gonna go back and.
No, I have, I have before, I'm the chairman. I have my time. When we first looked at the building, the drawing showed that they were gonna move Jobs and Family Services and the Board of Elections. That would have not been enough room for the call center. I was opposed and, and Dave said on the campaign trail, so did I, I'm not moving J F S, I personally not. Wanting to move J F S out of the city in that building, it does not make sense, it's way out there, it's not centrally located, period. But I am not up here, Carol, to argue and why you're upset.
I am upset because.
We're spending tax.
We spent three different.
All right, come on now. Look, it's taxpayer dollars, all I'm asking is, I'm not comfortable personally. I'm gonna work with you, please, gentlemen, ladies, vote for it. I'm gonna work with you to make it successful. As of today, I don't feel comfortable, it's a large investment, it's a new administration coming in, I have to be accountable to the taxpayers, it's a, it's a large purchase and we're gonna renovation costs and a bunch of unforeseen things, so if we can't hold off, then I, then I have to be opposing it. So that's all I had to say, there's no, no personal hard feelings here. It's another day in the office. That's what we're doing. So.
And, and you're right, because you, you brought to our attention that we've had dozen renderings that have been given to us. And they've brought them in and showed us. J F S was shown in here. Board of Elections was shown in here, they've given us renderings of all of those as auctions to go in here, all of them. So they could utilize the space. The ones that we control that now rent space outside of the county or outside the city. You know, is the building inspection, Board of Elections or Board of Education. Building inspection, led and planning. Those three entities along with an educational center and conference rooms, fifteen thousand square feet of the building. So like our new HR Director, Dino Wilson came in and said that if I'm not moving forward with fallback, because we've all advocated, we need an educational center. The building inspection now does double the work they did before. They've, we have taken over the, of issuing the permits for the City of Youngstown. And now we have twice, twice the permits that came in, we have, you know, people working and trained. Opportunities for labor to come in there and use the educational center for training. Opportunities for the county to use the training to invite people and along the campaign trail, Gino even advocating. You know, we need to be better for our people, to make it more inviting, to entice quality people to apply for quality jobs, to move forward. This gives us options. If you look at stuff that's currently, we're talking Board of Elections, we're talking about moving jobs. There's only fifteen full-time jobs for Elections, that's all, fifteen. That's all we're talking about, fifteen full-time jobs, but there's a lot in for space, any twenty thousand square feet. And sure, it'd be nice to have a loading dock, you know what a loading dock is? It's a cement ramp. You know, I mean, in construction, you could build, if, if, if I was here after January, my, my recommendation would be that, you know, you have thirty-five, if fifteen thousand gets the three that are committed and you have thirty-five thousand square feet and the office portion of the Board of Elections is twenty thousand and ten thousand of it is storage of all the equipment that we have, that we needed to be adjacent. I would recommend building ten thousand square feet on the back of it with the, with the dock and bring that adjacent and accessible because you know what? That ten thousand square feet of office space could be rented to Ohio Means Jobs, they're renting ten thousand square feet in the Boardman Plaza. It could be Mahoney, Mahoney Columbiana Technical Career, uh, Center, uh, that's running eight thousand square feet in Young, on Boardman Cantile Road in the old seven twenty-one building. There's the E M A building that we have on Dussero Road, where one person that works in nine-one-one is down there, one person that works in special projects is down there. We have soil and water where four people are in a garage and a building falling down. We have the day reporting that are in the old Dog Pound Building that should have been torn down the day we built the new Dog Pound Building. We built the Dog Pound and if I didn't push and push and push, and I'm sorry, on building new buildings, we wouldn't have a new Dog Pound. You know, and, and it was the first building built in Mahoney County in thirty-five years, you know. You do, you do it on O I O, you look at it. And, but you know, return on investment from looking at it as a business standpoint is what do you do from a financial perspective? But it's not only financial when you're in government, it's a responsibility issue. Because we are responsible to find a good location, accessibility and safety, not only for two hundred and forty thousand residents, for every building that serves the county, but for the employees that work in those buildings. And this is the, and this is the impetus, and I'm sorry, to get us off of our butt to do something in the city with Oak Hill. We looked at the, the Gateway Community College, that was part of the assessments, we've been doing building assessments for years, let me tell you. This isn't like showing up on the agenda today without having been vetted very, very detailed. So we, we looked at Gateway Community College and what's the most necessary entity with anything that we're looking to do is, is parking. Is one-story accessibility, we have an older county and an older population that needs to have curbside accessibility, you know, I mean, the, I can't get anybody to come to one of our meetings, they gotta pay seven bucks and they, they can't find a parking spot. You know, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's just we create roadblocks for people that, that we shouldn't create roadblocks. So there are so many options to put in this building. I, I mean, I would advocate building a loading dock on the back when we're doing the renovations, it's a minimal cost. If we did everything that we're talking about to move in, it's only four million, four and a half million dollars including the cost, that, that includes the cost of the building. And, and they just said three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, you're at fourteen to eighteen million dollars. I mean, it's crazy, we're never gonna tear down a building or a parking deck and, and build a building there on Oak Hill. I mean, if we can build a building, it should be in the city, in the hub. That's why we looked, that's why we looked at Gateway Community College, you know what's called that? It's eighteen million dollars to fix the parking deck. So we can go into another building with no parking, eighteen million dollars, that's ridiculous. How are we gonna spend eighteen million dollars on a parking deck? We have six hundred parking spaces here that doesn't cost anything to pay. You know, so, I mean, and, and if you look at all of these other buildings or all these other convention of visitors. You know, when people call up to convention of visitors and say, hey, I need pamphlets for my store, okay, drive down Boardman Street, call me when you get in, in, in the road in front and I'll run down and hand you the, the pamphlets so you can take them to your facility and pass them out. We don't have Convention Visitors Bureau. We don't have accessibility for people to walk in and say, oh, let's do this, let's do that. You have so many options and opportunities to move forward. If you don't take advantage of the situation that is presented to us, then you might as well just, you know, just keep moving backwards. Because, you know, if you're not moving forward, you're not gonna keep the fallback. So it's, it's something that I've been an advocate to get out of Oak Hill for a long time. It served its purpose, it's done a good job for the interim time. But now, when a pipe breaks and I get a call and I come over to the Board and I'm helping them put tarps over a machine, the, the water's coming from two floors above, two floors above. And then the cleanup, you, you gotta call somebody for cleanup, it's, it's not, you know, a thousand bucks, it's forty thousand. When a pipe breaks, it's cast iron and it's in a cement wall, it's a hundred thousand. When the morgue starts stinking up the building and the people can't work any longer, you know what it costs? A half a million dollars to vent the morgue out the roof. Fifteen years ago, we got, there was prices presented to me when I came here twelve years ago, they were, they could have built a new morgue for one point seven million dollars. Why didn't we do it? You know, because money wasn't available then. Right now, ARPA funds has plugged the gap, high interest rates has provided, uh, interest income. You know, we, we took on the interest income and, and, and budgeted in four to five hundred thousand dollars, you know what it was? It was five million. It was five million last year. So you'll never have an opportunity to move the county forward like you have today. And I'm sorry, you know. I've been told, you know, hey, you know what, you know what you should do? Walk away and say, let them take care of it next year. You know what, that, that's not how I, I, I vote. You know, I, I was elected to do the right thing on behalf of the residents of Mahoney County for every minute, every day that I'm in office. And I can, I can walk out of here and say that I absolutely did the right thing every time, every time. So and I can justify every decision I have made. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's an option that, that we would be foolish to allow to go by, so. And the Port Authority, you know, Randy, Anthony, Krista, everybody there. So, you know, you guys do a phenomenal job. What did you guys just buy down the street not too long ago? I think it was six million dollars, it was six plus.
City Center One and Commerce.
So, I mean, so they do this every day, every day. And Anthony, is, is it a good deal?
The building's a good value.
So.
I think, yeah, we'd all agree that's a good value, the building.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's either take it off the table and just keep doing what we're doing, endeavor progress and, and let Dave and everybody in the Board of Elections and, and all the voters, you know, be disenfranchised, uh, once again, when, when election time comes around. And, you know, and the other thing that, that, that I'm fearful of is we, we wanna save the, the large departments in the city. And I've talked to the Mayor over and over again, you know, as goes the city, so goes the county. You know, and we are all advocates for the city. J F S is a, possibly a hundred fifty jobs, child support, there's fifty-five jobs, I think sanitary engineers got a hundred jobs. I mean, so all of those things, you know, there's no impetus to move the big departments out. When you have all these little splintered departments that are stuck in corners all over the county and we're renting space in most of them. The Board of Health is gonna have to build onto their building because they don't have room for expansion. And that was one of the emphases to move building inspection out to give them more room. So, I mean, if, there is so many options on the building, you can, you can rent it to somebody that's government, you can move your own facilities in. And no matter what you do, it will improve the service to the residents of the Mahoney County by leaps and bounds and the employees that work. by leaps and bounds and the employees that work on the departments that we call back.
Well, Dave just made my case. We need a hell of a business plan. And we need the best minds sitting at the table to see how, you know, we are going to proceed forward with the many buildings that we have. We have Bev Road, we have the Veterans Center that we have to deal with. We have to deal with Oak Hill. So, simply saying, I just would like to have a little more time to put something in place that we can actually see what all these costs are going to be. Dave did a great illustration for that. Port Authority, thank you. We've done business for many years and you always do a wonderful job.
Thank you. Appreciate your service. We have continued conversations with the Conservator. We've had probably three or four talks with them. I think that's still tied up in legal matters. We've met with Randy, who's a structural engineer. We've met with engineers to evaluate the parking deck and its longevity, what its needs are. And we're still working through that, what some of the options for that site would be. We definitely have a vested interest in its, you know, success of that property.
We have another issue, this, you know, skate school, whatever happens here happens. But we also have another problem. We need to build a brand new county road engineers facility. Pat Sinetti has been asking that building, it's in horrible shape. I know you have Fortunato to tell you about it, Alan, but he's out of room there. The building is, pipes are leaking. That's something else that we need to sit down with Pat Sinetti and talk about that, because he's been on for a long time.
Like this Commissioner, we're prepared to serve the Commissioner.
I would love to do that.
Whatever your decisions are, we'll serve and we're ready to attack any project. It's what we do.
So, we'll come up with a plan.
Very good.
We appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, where are we at? I lost my place. We're on C, all right. Continue if you're calling. Hello.
Hello, good morning Commissioners and Nancy. This is a resolution approving the moral obligation of a payment of $2,656.25 to the Coalition on Homelessness and Housing in Ohio for additional HMIS licenses.
Thank you. Brand's Management, Alan.
Good morning Commissioners, Nancy.
Jimmy.
This is a multitude of resolutions approving the addendums with the following agencies to extend the services until June 30th, 2026, funded by the American Rescue Plan Act at no change in amounts. The ABC Water District, Austintown Township, Economic Action Group, Grace Evangelistic Temple Church, Mahoning Valley Construction Coalition, Mahoning Valley Manufacturers Coalition, Poland Township, Youngstown Jubilee, Youngstown Neighborhood Court, and Youngstown State University.
Thank you, thank you. And sanitary, G and H?
G is a resolution of necessity to purchase one Ford F-250 with a snowplow from Allstate Ford of Youngstown in the estimated amount of $59,330. And H is a resolution approving the discharge of easements for the Boardman Outpatient Surgery and Surgery Center. And that is for the SLP Land Company.
Thank you. And Sheriff.
Commissioners, I is a resolution in support of an application to the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the fiscal year of 2025. This grant is for body worn cameras in the amount of $81,500. That's with no local action partner.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have a motion to approve letter D?
Make a motion to approve letter D.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Romi DiRigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
No. Motion to approve letters A, B, C, E, F, G, H and I.
Motion for the approval of the remainder, which is A, B, C, E, F, G, H and I. Do I have that motion?
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Romi DiRigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes. And for the good deed order, any elected officials or department heads care to comment at this time? Paul was first.
Thank you, Anthony. Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Nancy. I know we're having changes of administration and I've had the opportunity to first three of you for the last 13 years. And it's been wonderful. All three of you have been exceptional. It's a wonderful part of the community. Mr. Alexa, wish you well. I look forward to working with you as well. But, you know, as a township trustee, everybody knows, we are nonpartisan. So, you know, political affiliation really has no place for a township trustee, which personally, I don't think I'd go with any of it. And I do appreciate the conversation you all have today regarding the thing you have on the picture. You know, I'm glad I didn't have to make that decision. And I admire all of you for the decisions we've been discussing with each other. But again, thank you all. Since the fifth, so you'll be missed. You've done a very good job. It's really helped us a lot. It was Carol and Anthony. Thank you all.
I'll still come explain the tips if you need me to.
I have your phone on, so I'll just play.
Thank you all. We always appreciate you.
Thank you.
Do a lot for your community.
I can realize everything along the way, you know, passionately, but it's important too. About a year ago, about a year ago, I came to talk to you and directly have a time-hold meeting here because of people taking their lives in Mahoning County. There are 53 people. At this point, we're up to 50. So, think about it, with 50 families at Christmas and Thanksgiving. But what we're learning is that every suicide affects over 100 people. So, there's 6,000 people being affected in Mahoning County. So, on Saturday, we're going to have, Saturday is the International Day of Survivors of Suicide. So, we're going to be going to the gazebo, the campus of care. And as you know, you know, we're blessed to have the campus of care and thank you for letting the Port The Port Authority does most of the heavy lifting out there. It's just a beautiful facility. But we're taking one of the gazebos. They've got a landscaper going around. So, initially, on Saturday, it'll just be a gazebo. We're going to have some flags. We're going to invite some survivors out. And we're just going to, we're going to talk about it moving forward next year with their help. There'll be roses and flowers and butterfly gardens and stuff. But we want a reflecting garden. We want a place where families can go that have lost somebody. Just not to suicide, but also maybe for the loss of drug loss. A lot of stigma with that. People need a quiet place to go. So, again, thank you for the campus of care. And on Saturday at 9:30, we're having the event. It'll be short of a couple of survivors there. We're actually having the Girl Scout troop coming out. They've apotted small flower cosmos for the visitors. Those would be about resilience, bringing them out to survivors. And so, next year, like I said, the hotel, the beautiful garden, people will come out on their leisure. They can sit there. Because again, a lot of stigma, we all have lost loved ones. But when someone hits their loved one because they think they may have had that choice, it's even worse. But we can never forget suicides are about pain. It's not about one of the people. So, thank you. We'll be back to see you on Saturday.
Guys, wait. Have you heard anything? About this $11 million build?
Yeah, we're still working on that. The units, yeah.
I know, I totally agree. I'm on the phone. I mean, that's, that's an $11 million project, free to the county, free to everybody. This is just kind of hard to follow this little house.
Wait, which building are you in on Saturday? Where are you going to be?
We have the campus of care.
In the back?
It's in the back. We go straight back and you'll see the gazebo. We have some flags. We got flags put up. And last year when I came, most of the people that have taken their lives were older men. Most all of them. This year, it's from kids in high school all the way up to people in their 80s. And so, we have a plan we're working on. We've got some, we're going to start a lot of prevention stuff. We work in post-dependence administration because a number of them, six of them this year, are veterans. We learn that if we can just make somebody stop and think for a few minutes and may save their lives. So, one of the things we're thinking about is producing gun locks and passing them out. So, people have to think a little bit before, you know, save a life. Most of the suicides we're seeing have been very violently made, so is that accidental? Like I said, we're up to 50. We're hoping to reverse that number next year.
Great, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Elections, I want to thank the County Commissioners and to Commissioner Trafficante and to Commissioner-elect, DeFavio. I will instruct our Director and Assistant Director to see if there are any grants available. Because I know there's money out there for voting and voting stuff. And I assure you, and I assure the public, not only will you be guarding taxpayer dollars, but our Board, which is an independent Board, will be guarding the taxpayers' dollars to make sure there are no cost overruns or anything else. So, thank you for, on behalf of the 260,000, of the 160,000 registered voters. Maybe we can get our voting percentages up now. I'm hoping that that will happen, but thank you very much. And I assure Commissioner Trafficante, Commissioner-elect, we look forward to working with you. This is a team effort, even though we're an independent Board. But we're going to work with you to make sure that everything's done smoothly and greatly. And we hope to be in there by a year from, you know, this last election. That's our goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alex? Okay, Nancy, your next meeting?
It's going to be on Tuesday.
That's right, Wednesday.
Yes.
All right. Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
No.
Commissioner Romi DiRigetti?